All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and get started. So if you could find your seats, we'll get this thrilling show on the road. I'm Rachel Britton. I'll be moderating this evening. Thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you. For those of you that know me from another context, I'll be talking decidedly slower this evening, so don't worry about that. However, the candidates have to answer their questions in one minute, so you may hear some accidental auctioneering from them. I want to also, I want to take this opportunity to thank the sponsors of this event. There are four co-sponsors: the American Association of University Women, the Willets Environmental Center, Mendocino Women's Political Coalition, and the Willets Economic Localization. A big thank you to those groups who are putting this evening together. And also a note that those groups have worked together to create some of the questions that we'll hear tonight, and I'll explain a little bit more about that later. Questions from our event sponsors and the audience will be heard. So if you have questions, please write them on the three-by-five cards that were provided at the front. If you need a three-by-five card, you can put your hand in the air, and Janine will bring you a three-by-five card. Janine's right here to my right. Can you put your hand up so they can see you? So if you need a card or if you have a question ready and you would like it to be accepted, you can raise your hand, and Janine can either bring you a card or accept that question from you. Questions from the audience will be brought up here to our wonderful question team. Cindy and Diane will take your questions, and they'll be consolidating for redundancy and then handing those questions to me. Great. My pleasure this evening to introduce our two third district candidates, or third district supervisor candidates. We have John Hascheck and John Pinches. So we're actually going to see how many times I can say "John" in one night tonight, so that will also be breaking a Guinness Book of World Records. Probably not, actually. I'm sure you could say it more times. If I said it in my auctioneering voice, I could probably say it a lot of times. All right, so the format of this portion will be a little different, so I'm going to explain it carefully. Once again, we'll have two-minute opening statements. We'll just flip-flop, so whoever goes first for the opening statement will not go first for the closing statements. There, once again, will be six sponsor questions, and we'll entertain five audience questions. Here again, if you're interested in submitting an additional audience question, you can raise your hand, and Janine will find you. The way that, once a question is asked, this is the way we will proceed. A question will be asked, and I will indicate who answers first. He will have one minute to respond to the question; then the second candidate will have one minute to respond to the same question. Then, the first candidate will be given the opportunity to then rebut their opponent's response, expanding on how their view is different, ask a question of their opponent, or continue their own response. And then that same opportunity will be extended to the second candidate. So it will go like this: first candidate has one minute, second candidate has one minute, first candidate has an additional minute, second candidate has an additional minute. Does that make sense? John's?
Yes.
Great.
Sounds like teaching poetry.
Yeah, and I won't be controlling the number of syllables you say in each minute. Once again, we'll begin with the sponsor questions, and we'll rotate back and forth who responds to a question first. In conclusion, each candidate will be given two minutes to offer closing statements. So, without further ado, let us begin with opening statements. John Pinches, would you like to begin with an opening statement?
Thank you, Rachel. And I, first of all, I want to thank the organizations for sponsoring this. Actually, it takes a little more work to put on this, to bring everything in, the sound system from Hal and the cookies and coffee. I really appreciate the effort the people put into that. But most of all, I appreciate you folks for showing up. Whether you vote for me or my opponent, I appreciate your interest. I've always felt really special to the people that take the time to listen to the issues and make their opinion and go to the polls. It's what makes this country great, and this is just a main part of it. The Third District in Mendocino County is a very unique place. It's very diverse. I've represented the people of the Third District for 12 years. I was on the board. Most of you know me. Most of you know my positions and my votes over the years. I'm not going to that. I feel up to doing four more years, because frankly, for the last four years, I don't like the way the Third District has been represented. I don't want to pick on anybody, but I don't think the Third District has been getting their fair share. Think about this, ladies and gentlemen: on a $300 million budget, that means the Third District should be getting $60 million worth of services someplace. Show me where it's at. I can't show you it. I can't see it in the roads. I can't see it in our services. That's just in county government. So I'm going to bring some projects and some things home to the Third District that I was able to do on the board. I drive around. We got a bridge going on out here, going up to Pine Mountain. That was a project I initiated years ago. We got other projects. The money that's being spent right now on the going up the Sherwood Road, that was part of the Willets bypass funding. It's part of the relinquish agreement for the city of Willets. I was very instrumental in getting that project going. It's my first part of my plan to get Sherwood Road upgraded in case of fire safety. You know, just the other day, there was a fire, or a wreck on 101, and the cars going north were diverted up over the Sherwood Road.
I'm going to have to cut you off there, John. Don't worry, there'll be plenty more time through the course of the evening.
Thank you. Looking forward to your questions.
Thank you, John. And John Hascheck.
All right, thank you. I too would like to thank everyone involved in getting this going. I've been involved lately with creating the forum for the school board candidates, and I'm starting to really understand how, how much is behind making one of these forums work. And thank you all for coming out. I'm John Hascheck. I'm, I'm running for Third District Supervisor after living in Willets since 1969. I've been teaching in the public schools for the last 29 years, and I've been involved in the California Teachers Association at all levels up to being the budget chair of the state teachers' union budget of $200 million. And so I've got that experience, and lately I've seen the need for representation in the Third District, so I decided to come home and just, and run for this, this seat, because I feel like we need, we need a supervisor who's going to be, you know, have the energy, the passion, and the vision to lead this Third District forward. We're in a time of real transition, and we have economic issues that we really need to deal with. We've got emergency preparedness that we need to deal with. And we've got governance, where I think some of the things in the governance level, we need to be focusing on transparency, we need to be focusing on outreach, we need to be working with people and listening to them. And so those are the reasons why I think that I am the best candidate. I'm John Hascheck. You can go to my website, hascheckforsupervisor.org. I've got my platform statement there. I've also, in the back, I've got my platform statement, where you can see where I stand on all the issues if you're not clear after tonight. So I thank you, and thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. And as before, we'll applaud, or you're welcome to applaud for opening and closing statements, but we'll ask that you hold your applause for the questions, so that we can move through them in a timely manner. This first question will go to John Hascheck. What are your, or both of you will answer it, but you'll begin the question, John. What are your top priorities that you hope to accomplish during your term in office?
We have one minute, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, like I just said, you know, we need to focus on our economy. We need to get broadband. We need to get a living wage for people. When we're talking about people who are homeless, let's get a living wage to all of our county employees. And we need to get career and technical education. You know, we're in a time of this transition. We need to diversify our economy, and the only way we're going to do it is to get our people trained in new ways of making money. Also, we need to promote what we do, you know, well so far, and we need to promote tourism. We need, like Larry was just talking about, the great Redwood Trail. We need to be promoting that. We need to be promoting canotourism. We need to do those things. We also need emergency preparedness. We need, you know, second access route out of Brook Trails, but we need to do other things for fire preparedness and alert systems. And we need to get our governance in, in order. So those are the three main areas.
Thank you. And John Pinches?
Thank you. My first priority is being a supervisor. It has been, when I served for 12 years, and it will continue for the next four years, number one priority is to represent the people of the Third District. I don't feel they've been fairly represented, whether it's the new cannabis ordinance or projects on our roads or any of the issues that really affect the Third District. I think the county has become, in the last four years, more Ukiah, what I call Ukiah-centric. And I'm going to make sure that the Third District has a representative that they pay for and deserve. That's my first priority. I've always been a big stickler on infrastructure. I think without infrastructure, you don't have much, big program which the federal government pays 97% of, getting bridges built in our area. My priority always was, one of the priorities is to get a better second access road out of Brook Trails. I brought that process forward. We have down to two routes, one to go into Highway 20 or going north, out past the old scales. That's will be a priority issue. It's a big one, though, because it's a large funding issue.
Thank you, John. You'll have an opportunity to finish that in a moment here. So that's an advantage of the format, is that if you aren't able to finish your thought in one minute, you'll have another minute. So at this point, John Hascheck, you have an opportunity to either respond to what John Pinches has said or expand on your earlier answer.
Well, I would say a couple, a couple things about what Mr. Pinches said was, we don't have a second access route out of Brook Trails. And to his, you know, he had 12 years in that position. He didn't get it done. And I've been endorsed by all of the board members of the Brook Trails Board, because they know that I'm going to work hard on it. I've been diligent. I've been learning about it, and they're all supporting me. I've talked to Mr. Dow from, you know, retired from MCAG. I've talked to Hal Wagonette. He's supporting me, because they know that I can work and get that job done, which wasn't done before. The other thing about outreach to people and not being Ukiah-centric, I've spent the last year going around this Third District, being up in Covelo, Leightonville, and I haven't seen my opponent out there. And I, my philosophy is, you reach out to the people. You go out to the different communities and make sure people feel represented.
Thank you, John. Thank you. John Pinches, you have another minute on this question or to respond to Hascheck.
Well, first of all, if that's an implication that I've been ignoring the people of the Third District, that's completely false. I've been in this community for 67 years. I'm not going to go anyplace, anyplace soon. I've represented you, you don't know how many calls I've made to the county in the last four years, when I'm not even on the board, on road issues or different issues for constituents. So I've, I'll be there for you. In the 12 years I served, I missed one, one board meeting in 12 years, and that was because I was in the hospital, but that was the only board meeting I missed. So I've been there to represent you, and I'll continue to be, on my worst day, I'll be your best representative.
Thank you. How's that format feel?
Fine.
Fine.
Okay, great. You got one question to get used to.
I want, I want more time.
This is the second question, and John Pinches, you'll be the first to respond to this question. The supervisors' 40% pay raise and the county CEO's yearly pay increase are not commensurate with the raises received by other county workers. Would you be willing to adjust the supervisors' salaries and the CEO's pay increase to be in step with raises received by other county workers?
Well, first of all, I'll agree with the CI Union on one, one point that they brought up with the other day, was that they should have completed a classification study and compensation study before they give any more raises out. But of course, it was unanimous vote by the Board of Supervisors to give the CEO rate increase. I don't think I would have voted yes on that, because I think that the compensation rate for upper-end county employees is pretty darn good. I do support the salary increase for the Board of Supervisors, because especially in a district as large as the Third District is, when I was on the board before, the salary varied sometimes very, never even really paid for my gasoline to travel around, because not only I was in Ukiah pretty much every day during the week, but I had to go to Covelo or Leightonville or someplace in the district, evening meetings, or just to meet a few people. It's more than a full-time job, ladies and gentlemen. I tell you, I've been there for 12 years. I know what it entails. There's a lot of phone calls, early, late in the evenings, and it's just, there's a lot to deal with.
Thank you. John Hascheck, your chance to respond to this question.
Yeah, that, that pay raise that the supervisors gave themselves was just a, every time I talk to a county employee, they say it's a slap in the face. And when the supervisors, going back to 2007, asked the county employees to give up 12.5% and they did, and then it was reduced to 10% to six months later, they went along with that. And the supervisors took that decrease too. But then, a lot of those people haven't gotten back to that point where they were in 2007. And so they're just getting back to that point. They just said at the Board of Supervisors meeting the other day that 80% are still, haven't gotten up to where they should be, and yet the supervisors went ahead and gave themselves a 40% raise before anyone else. You know, leaders eat last, and that's the way my philosophy will be. I will not take it.
Thank you, John. Thank you. John Pinches, you now have an opportunity to continue your response.
First of all, it's state law that said supervisors are, are, set their own compensation, not the people. That's state law. So the Board of Supervisors didn't really have, that's, that's their part of their job. State law, they have to do that. As far as compensation for upper-end county employees, I think it's pretty good. You know, not only have the salary increases, but you have the step increases. That's a five-step process. You have the classification increases. There's, there's a lot more ways. But the benefit package for county, Mendocino County employees is tremendous. There's no, probably no agency out there that has a benefit package and pension package that Mendocino County employees have. We have over 1,000 county retirees that the pension fund, that the county supports at Pension Fund. But it's, it's, I think the working for Mendocino County is a lot better job than it was 20 years ago. I was on the board when we had to reduce all the salary employees plus the supervisors by 10%.
Thank you, John.
The reason we did that, the other option was to lay off about 400 people and have them lose their job.
John, thank you. John Hascheck, your opportunity to respond.
I want to see the state law that says that you have to give yourself a 39.7% increase. Show it to me, you know, and then we can have a reasonable conversation. But to say that the, the employees of the, the county employees are getting a tremendous, you know, this benefit package and everything is just not based in reality, because we have this problem of filling the positions for a lot of our county workers. They're going to other counties because they're getting better treatment, and they're getting respect and all, and better wages and packages than we are here, and yet the supervisors gave themselves that big raise, and it's not state law. So that's why I'm not taking it, and with that money, we can do scholarships in Willets, Leightonville, and Covelo, whatever it takes, we're going to do. We're not going to go into that place where you're disrespecting the people who are doing the day-to-day work in this county.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Next question, and John Hascheck, you'll be the first to respond to this question. What is your position on the combined library, museum, and parks department? If you oppose it, what would you propose to do about it now? If you opposed it, what would you propose to do about it now? John?
Yes, I'm, I'm against that consolidation of the library, museum, and the parks program into this cultural services agency. I spoke out about it at the Board of Supervisors meeting. I've been talking to those people who are very much involved in the Friends of the Library, the Library Advisory Board, the Museum Board. What we need to do is, I don't think the people got the information about the studies that they were, the Board of Supervisors was supposed to do about it. I think that we need to get that information, see how much money was actually being saved, because when you have all these people who are volunteering as community citizens to help improve the library and the museum, and they're saying, "Hold on, this is not a good idea," then we need to listen to those people, and we need to have a manager for each one of those. Stop the plan, let's listen to what the people are saying, and then go forward.
Thank you, John. Thank you. And John Pinches?
I wouldn't have supported the creation of the cultural, putting those three agencies together, for the simple reason, I don't think there's, number one, there's not much money to be saved. The library funding is set in stone. That has to go into the library system. I was the one that put up my year's salary on the board. If the, if the, if the measure didn't pass for the tax to be in place, then they would have took a year's my salary to pay for the cost of putting on the ballot. So I was firmly committed behind the library. As far as the museum and the parks, the county's only got two or three little small parks, very small budget. Probably the biggest agency that's going to hurt from it is maybe the museum, because when they add it together, they're probably not going to come up with a, it'll be a single budget unit, and that won't come up with as much funding. So I wouldn't have supported it, because I don't think it's, and they, they had the public meetings, and the public overwhelmingly said, "We don't want to do it." Then they kind of back-ruined it by doing it through the budget process. But it was a 5-0.
And that's the time there, John. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted-
And you'll have, you'll have a moment to wrap up that thought, still with this question. And I might add, before you respond, Hascheck, that the second part, given that you both oppose, the second part of this question is, what would you propose to do about it now? And perhaps you could take us there. Go ahead, John.
Okay, I was trying to get to that at the end of my last comments, but, you know, we need to keep it the way it is, or the way it was, with a director for the libraries, a director for the museum, and the parks, whatever. You know, well, the parks, you know, are a very small entity, like Mr. Pinches said. So, but the library with its special funding from Measure A needs to be kept separately, because you can't co-mingle those funds. You cannot let people think that their, the money for Measure A is going somewhere else, because otherwise, the next time it comes up for a vote, people won't vote for it. You know, I'm proud to have Mark Comer, who's the Chair of the Library Advisory Board, as my treasurer for this campaign, and I believe the work that the board did and the people who showed up at the board meetings was the right way that we should be going.
Thank you, John. And Pinches, you have an opportunity to expand here.
Well, first of all, the parks never did have a directory. It was always part of the General Service Agency, and in the county, the last three years ago, they done away with the General Service Agency, so the Parks Department resides right now in the CEO's office, and I'm not so sure that's a good thing. But it was a 5-0 vote. All five board members voted for this consolidation. It's kind of cast in stone. I'll have the discussion if I get on the board, but I don't think it's hard to turn a 5-0 vote into a 3 to 2 vote. It's just, especially when you're dealing with the same people that, after the first year, John or I get in there, we're going to have to deal with. So I'm not going to promise you and say that I can change that, because it's pretty well cast in stone. I want to be realistic with you. I'll do what I can, but it's, it, that one would be tough to change it, because it's kind of like the horse has already left the barn.
Thank you. Thanks for that response, John. Moving on to our next question, and John Pinches, you'll be the first to respond to this question. Will you enforce Measure V, the ban on intentionally killing trees on county forest land and leaving them standing? Yes or no? If yes, how will you proceed? John Pinches?
Well, did, can I, you, did you qualify by that, by saying county land?
And the question states, "on county forest land," yes.
Well, first of all, there is no county forest. The county, it's all private property owned by different individuals and companies and whatnot, so it's not the way I interpret this county land. It's, there's no county forest land. It's all private property.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, and maybe, to be fair, we could give you some more time here, John, but I think the intention of the question is land, forest land in the county, not owned by the county. Go ahead.
Was that spraying or cutting trees?
It's, it's a question about whether you support the endorsement, or the enforcement of Measure V, and then it's qualified by saying, "the ban on intentionally killing trees."
Yeah, that was, that was the spraying of pesticides on basically your tan oak glands. That's what it was. That right now is, no matter what I say or don't say, it don't really matter, because the reason it's, there's no enforcement held up, the voters passed it, but it's held up in court. I mean, there's a constitutionality about private property rights, and that's why the county's not enforcing it. It probably should have never been put on the ballot, because you can't put things on the ballot that are, that won't pass constitutional muster right from day one. That was a mistake of your county council by even allowing that to go on the ballot. It kind of made, it sounded good to the people, but it was not really legally constitutional, and that's why there's no enforcement, because it can't, constitutionally cannot enforce it.
Thank you.
And I know that's something a lot of people don't want to hear, but I'm just telling you the reality of the situation.
Thank you, John. And John Hascheck, your opportunity.
Yes. Okay, and, so you wanted a yes or no answer, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And, yes, I would enforce Measure V, and I've talked to Ted Williams, who's a presumptive Fifth District candidate, who's going to win, most likely, over there, and he's in agreement that we should be enforcing it. I've read, I have to say, I disagree with Mr. Pinches, is, it's not a question of constitutionality. It's a question of whether it's a nuisance ordinance or if it infringes on the state's timber harvest practice plans. And so I've read what the county council sent off to the state Attorney General to get an opinion on it, and it looked like the county was definitely saying, you know, "We think that it could be upheld as a nuisance ordinance." It's a life and death safety issue, because we're creating all these-
That's your time there, but you can expand in a moment.
Dead trees out in the forest that could catch fire and threaten our survival.
John Pinches, your opportunity to respond.
Well, the reality of it is, the reason they're spraying herbicides in the forest is try to kill out what they call the weeds, and that's the tan oak that's interfering with your redwood and your Douglas fir. If you let, cut your redwood timber out of a forest, which larger timber companies are all doing, and do that over a couple cycles, say 40, 50 years, all you're going to do is turn your redwood forest into a tan oak for, tan oak forest that there's no market for, no jobs for. Louisiana Pacific, when they were in this county, they spent millions and millions of dollars trying to research to find a market to use, to, to deal with their tan oak forest. Nobody's been successful. If any of you can do that and find a market for the redwood wood, whether it's lumber or whatever, then great, you can make a billion dollars probably off of it. But that's a real problem. Keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, though, if you keep leaving that tan oak there, after a couple cutting cycles, you take your real prime, really high-grade redwood forest land and turn it into useless tan oak weed property, and that's the reality of it.
Thank you, John. Thank you. And Hascheck, your time to respond.
Yes, I was just talking with Richard Wilson, who's the former director of all forestry in California. He lives up in Covelo. He's the person who stopped the, the Covelo Valley from being dammed. And, and he was saying, basically, you know, we're doing, the hack-and-s squirt issue is just because the timber companies got greedy, and that they're trying to accelerate their, their ability to make money, and it's just greed. They don't want to wait, you know, it's that, "Give me results for my stockholders right now." And when we're threatening our communities with this fire danger from all these dead trees and throwing all these herbicides into our, our forest, that's an issue that we need to take seriously. The people voted for it. Let's listen to them. Let's give the people the benefit of the doubt in this case, since the legal opinion is not clear.
Thank you. John.
Okay.
All right, moving on to our next question.
Can I rebut that again? No.
The, the simple answer to that question, John, is no. Sorry.
Okay.
Because you've already had, well, well, actually, you could, and then we'd have to allow, then we could allow Hascheck the opportunity as well. Is that what you'd like to do?
Well, I just want to educate a little more for, on, further on that issue.
So let's do another, I just want to communicate with our timekeeper. We'll do another minute for Pinches and another minute then also for you as well, John Hascheck.
About 20 years ago, there was a period of time where there was three pulp, or not pulp mills, but plants that generated, that burned wood for, for- but plants that generated, that burned wood for, for electricity generation up in Humboldt County. And they were taking a massive amount of our tan oak out of our forest down here in Mendocino County. And it was working great. We were getting the, the tan oak, what I call a weed tree, out of our redwood forest and shipping it up to Humboldt County, creating a lot of jobs and they were generating electric power. Well, since then, all three of those electric generating power plants have closed down because they can't complete, compete with hydroelectric power. Basically, this water supply from the Columbia River. So, so they closed down. So, so that left no market for the tan oak. And that's the reason, the, this tan oak grows really fast. And the companies, whether they're small or large companies, small landowners, that's one of the options they want to do is what they call the hack and squirt, to kill the trees, to get them thinned down so it don't impede the redwood growth on redwood land. We know a large asset in Mendocino County is our redwood forest land.
Thank you, John.
And we want to protect it.
I'm going to cut you off there, but thank you for that additional rebuttal. And then John Hashtag, you'll have an additional minute as well.
Well, it goes back to that difference where I said, yes, I wanted to enforce that Measure V, the hack and squirt issue, because that's what the people voted for and that's what we need to go with. And my opponent says, I guess, no, that he wouldn't. And my brother's a forester. He works for Gualala Redwoods. And I've heard a lot about these forestry issues. But I do know, you know, and what I do know is that when we're creating these hazards, we already have enough hazards with global warming and the fire danger and all that that we've seen. When we're creating this hazard for our communities by hacking and squirting them the trees with pesticides, then that needs to stop. And the people wanted it and the supervisors should be upholding it. Unless there's a legal opinion that says, "No, you cannot do that." And there is not that.
Not yet.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next question. John Hashtag, you'll be the first to respond to this question. Should Mendocino County be helping the state meet its greenhouse gas reduction goals? If so, what role can the Board of Supervisors play in meeting these goals? Please be specific.
Well, you know, we, in the United States, we backed out of that Paris Agreement for Climate Change. It was an idiotic decision on the national level. California has put into place lots, lots of things to achieve, you know, to lessen the amount of greenhouse gases, to set goals and striving for, you know, where we are a model for the world in how we're going to save this planet. And California's doing it and our economy is booming. We need to do the same thing in Mendocino County. We need to set some goals and try to strive for, you know, reduction of fuel consumption, renewable power, and energy efficiency in our buildings. So we can do those things. Let's do them and let's make Mendocino a model.
I'm sorry. That was my fault. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Good, thank you.
And John Pinches, go ahead.
First of all, we already have done a lot to, to help our air quality in Mendocino County. We got the new state rules emissions on our large trucks. I just come from a log hauler's house early this evening. He's got a beautiful truck sitting there. He can't run it. He had to buy a new one because it didn't meet the new emission standards. That's happened to a lot of people, contractors in this county, where they've had to get rid of completely good equipment to meet the new state air quality regulations. And hopefully, it's a good thing. Although, keep in mind, our air quality here is the best in the nation. There's nobody has any better air quality. That's not me saying. Call your local air quality management district. One thing that we did, the worst air quality in Mendocino County was pre the Willis bypass, the intersection right there going to Highway 20 in front of the Safeway store. That was worst air quality because of the trucks idling at the stop sign. You say, "Well, the trucks are still going out in the valley." They are, but they're not sitting at the stop signs idling. So that was the single most thing that we can do to help our air quality was to get those trucks from idling in the center of Willis.
Thank you. Thanks, John. And John Hashtag, you have the opportunity to respond.
Well, I think the county does have a role in reducing greenhouse gases. And I, I, I want to think about planning and how can we do that? Let's, let's look at improving our public transit. You know, we have communities, Leightonville and Covelo that aren't being served with public transit, yet lots of people need, need to get into Ukiah or wherever. Let's look at walking and biking communities. You know, I think that the city council is doing a great job in, in looking forward with that plan. But, and we can make walking, biking, and those kind of efforts much more in Leightonville and Covelo. I commend that the Walk and Bike Mendocino Group and what they're doing. And they're out there every morning at Blosser Lane, walking laps with the kids and making kids feel like they're more buying into being active. And so, so let's, let's promote those things that make wellness and a cleaner, healthier environment.
Thank you. And Pinches?
Yeah, when I was on the board, and it's still in place, the Carl Moyer Program, which replaces school buses. And when I was on the board, we got, I don't know, one or two new school buses for Willis and I think one for Leightonville. And they was taking the old, you know, high emissions school buses and replacing them with the, the new standard buses. So there are things we're going to do. But when you're talking about the county of Mendocino, it's dump truck fleet is an example, and all this equipment, it has to meet the same standards as a public. And so it's a slow process, but all that equipment is slowly being, being replaced with the newer, better emission standards. So we are doing a lot to make our air quality better here. And it's, it's costing the all-you taxpayers to do that, but we're doing it over time. And it's, but there's been a tremendous transformation in the age of our trucks, large and small trucks here in Mendocino County in the last five years, just because these new state air quality standards. And one could argue, "Well, we already have the best air quality in the world. Why we want to make it better?"
That's time, John.
Well, because that's what people want. So we're making it even better.
Thank you. All right, this is our final question from the sponsors. And then we'll move on to questions from the audience. And John Pinches, you'll be the first to respond to this question. Do you think the county's emergency services are adequate? If not, what would you do to improve them?
Well, first of all, I don't think ever any emergency service is going to be totally adequate. You know, we have a county that's two and a half, little over two and a half million acres with, with just under 90,000 people in it. So that means people are scattered out everywhere. So to get emergency services, whether it's fire, EMTs, ambulance, law enforcement, to get everybody out, somebody out there on time for every occurrence in an emergency is, is really tough. And then when you have the large fire events, that makes it really tougher. But, because we're, we're spread out area. We're not all in one city block, our population. And so it's really tough. But to answer your question, no, I don't think it's ever enough. But the people, taxpayers of this Mendocino County, the budget's about $278 million this year. Half of it comes from the federal and state government, about actually over half, $165 million. And it goes to other services. You know, we have fire support. We have police. We spend a lot of money on sheriff and jail.
And that's time, John.
But there's mental health services. A lot of services to provide.
You'll have time to come back to this question. John Hashtag, go ahead.
First of all, vote yes on Measure J for emergency services. That's for Willis. Senator Mike McGuire just got SB 833 passed, which sets a minimum standard for alert systems for every county. And it's a baseline alert system leveling because not all counties are up to that level. I totally support that approach where we need to get our alert systems, first of all, at that baseline level and then see where we can go with that. Because we, it's critical. And people in Brook Trails, people all over this county know that we need an alert system that is state of the art that will get people the notification as soon as possible. So I'm proud to be endorsed by Senator McGuire. And I look forward to working with him and implementing this and getting the state to help us get state of the art alert systems in Mendocino County.
Thank you, John. Thank you. And John Pinches, an opportunity to respond here.
To come up with a bill like that sounds good, but without the funding source to follow it up, that means it gets passed down to the local counties. So what services are you going to take away to provide those services for emergency service? Are we going to take it out of mail and health? We going to take it out of our roads? It's all a priority situation. And that's why in my 12 years of service, I think I've done a pretty good job get to, to funding the services that are important to the people. You know, fire services, all emergency services, they're extremely important. But we're, we're doing services on a daily basis that, that's get the benefit from. For instance, mental health services. We spend over $30 million a year providing mental health services for people out there in the county, all the way from Covelo to Leggett to Point Arena. Those services are being provided every day. So if you want to come up with a block of money to provide another area services, the question is, without increased revenues, what, you're going to have to take the money from some other priority you have. So it gets, you know, it's, it's not an easy situation. There's some tough decisions to be made.
Thank you. Go ahead.
It is an easy situation. And I've got the solution right now. We take that raise that the supervisors gave themselves and put it towards an alert system that's going to make us safer. That is a solution. It's easy. Let's do it and go forward. We cannot say we cannot do an alert, you know, system. We have to do that. We have thousands of people up in the woods in Brook Trails, Pine Mountain. We cannot say we can't do it. Let's take that salary raise and do it.
Thank you, John. All right, we're going to be moving on to audience questions now. So first, a thank you to the candidates. I know you guys are working under the wire here. And I do want to give you an opportunity to finish your sentences, but we have a lot of great audience questions. So really, our goal here is trying to hit as many topics as possible. And that's why I'm kind of pushing you. So thank you for, for working with me here. And so this is our first audience question. And John Hashtag, you'll be the first to respond to this question. With around 6,000 residents, the Sherwood communities, including Brook Trails, are in a fire risk, one road in, one road out situation. Aside from the very long-term possibility of a second access Boulevard District, as our third district supervisor, what will you do after November to help secure short-term additional emergency evacuation routes? John?
Yes. Good question. And, you know, like I said before, I've been endorsed by every member of the Brook Trails Board because they know that I'm going to be working on this as one of my top priorities. We need to have a short-term fix for emergency access, you know, in times of fire. And we need to have the long-term fix. I'm going to be working on both of those. I've been working with the Firewise Council up in Sherwood Road. Those people are doing incredible work and coming together as community and trying to figure out what's best. But we can also get the, the Resource Conservation District to be doing a lot of fire preparedness work, too. It's a county agency that brings in $76 for every dollar they spend. If they get more money, they can do a lot more. And I think that we have a lot more work to do. I think that's money well-spent. Because it's being spent back in our communities to make us safer.
Thank you. And John Pinches, your opportunity to respond.
First of all, a better access out of Brook Trails is extremely important. Although, right now, there are, when, other alternate, Brook Trails is not a one-way in, one-way out, as you stated. You can go out to the county road to the coast or you can go out to county road to Leightonville. So, yes, you can. Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with you, but they're, they're both county roads. Anyways, and the Brook Trails Board, when I was on the board in the 90s, right after the Oakland Hills fire, the same issue come up. And the Brook Trails Board put out a, the fire department put out a map of all the alternate accesses out of Brook Trails. And that was rescinded because too many of the residents up there complained about it because it allowed people to come in front of their house looking for these alternate routes. But it was a priority of mine. We got it down when I left the board. There was two routes they were studying under SEQUIL. You have to do this. One was a route to Highway 20. The other one is to go north. And this was before the Willis bypass built. And that's when I left the board, it seems like everything just stopped. It's a priority, but there are a lot of one-way in and one-way out roads in Mendocino County.
I'll pause you there, John.
Like Pine, Pine Mountain.
You'll have an opportunity to, to finish that thought in one minute, literally. John Hashtag, go ahead.
Going back to the second access route out of Brook Trails, there was a study done, and Mr. Wagonette, who was on the board for a while, can vouch for this, that the viable routes were going down to 101. And that was the only way we were going to get funding from the state and feds is to alleviate some of the traffic congestion in a normal day, which is bad enough on Sherwood Road. And so those routes were taking that into consideration. The route that Mr. Pinches came up with going out Highway 20 was not a viable one because it didn't, it didn't pin out or pencil out financially because we wouldn't get that funding from the states or the feds. And so it didn't work. And it just threw a monkey wrench into the whole plan of providing a second access route for Brook Trails and Sherwood Road. And so that's where I think we differ on this. And I appreciate the support I've gotten from the community members up there.
Thank you. And Pinches, your opportunity.
John, what you, what you said is just not true. First of all, under SEQUIL law, the California Environmental Quality Act, you've got to study every route. Otherwise, you're, you're going to be liable for a lawsuit if, if they want to stop and say, "Well, you should have went this way because you didn't study that." The object was the study of a route. I mean, remember, there was a meetings in this room here when they studied the Willis bypass. I think they started out, there was 18 or 20 different routes they had to study. So the Highway 20 route was studied and the one going north is studied. Seems like the, most of the people support up there. There's two issues. There's fire safety and traffic circulation. Both have to be taken into consideration. The fact of the matter is, there was no funding at the time to do it, just to do some of the small in-county studies. But to get really serious about it, somebody's going to have to put up some real money. And I don't know if it's going to be state because it doesn't connect to state highways. So I don't know how, there's not very many pots of state money and this, funding that will be available. Maybe you can get lucky and get a federal grant, although the new federal infrastructure bill hasn't even been proposed yet.
That's time there, John.
But it's a very long process. Another option is to do the benefit assessment or Boulevard District, what they call it, which is only the people of Brook Trails.
John, I want to let you finish your sentence, but I'm going to have to cut you off at new sentences, just to be fair.
There's a lot to that issue.
It does seem like there's a lot to that issue. Do you have interest, hashtag, in taking another rebuttal there? Or would you like to move on to the next question?
Um, you know.
No pressure. I know, I realize I was kind of mean to ask you that question, but it's your choice.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, the audience says move on. I told you I wanted a game show atmosphere. Everyone shout what you want to happen. Move on, move on. Okay, great. That's the kind of forum I'm talking about. I've been waiting for that on the right. All right, we're moving on to the next question. So, this-
Additional access routes for $50. No, just kidding.
Good. I like that. Next opportunity for a forum will be playing In Jeopardy style. All right, this next question, you'll be the first to answer, John Pinches. The question is, Mendocino County, this is a long question, by the way, just so that you know what's coming. Mendocino County is a party to meetings in regards to the purchase of the Potter Valley Project, Lake Pillsbury and the Eel River diversion into the Russian River. Project, Lake Pillsbury, and the Eel River diversion into the Russian River. The outcome has environmental, economic, and safety implications for the whole county. Do you think these meetings should be open to the public? How would you include the public in these discussions? And what are your thoughts on how we can reconcile the competing interests? John Pinches, you'll be the first to respond.
First of all, I believe all of the meetings are open to the public. I noticed on the TV that the Mendocino County Water Agency is meeting here the second week in October, next week. Anyways, the inland water and power company, which is part of the county, the Russian River Flood District, those are all public meetings, and I encourage the people to get involved in that. One thing that I've said about the Potter Valley Project, it is a hydroelectric project, but the main benefit to Mendocino County is the water. And that is, I'm adamant about this, that is Mendocino County's water. That water has been going through the tunnel since 1906. It's been, before there was Lake Mendocino built, where Sonoma County got involved, that was in the 50s. There was about 50-year period there that it was only for the bend of Mendocino County. We have established a pre-1914 water right on that water, and no matter who buys the project, if Mendocino County and its group of agencies can't come up with the money or what they want, and it's still Mendocino County's water. PG&E don't own that water. They were using that water right.
That's time, John.
But it's Mendocino County's water, and I'm going to tell Sonoma County that and everybody.
Thank you, John. And John, hashtag.
Certainly, these kind of meetings should be open to the public, and the Potter Valley Water Project is, you know, it's very, it's a vital thing where the water is coming out of Mendocino and Lake Counties, and it's flowing through this diversion into the Russian River Basin, part of it, and part of it's going into the Eel River. And so since 1906, it's been a vital part of economic growth throughout Mendocino County and then on through Sonoma County. So when Mr. Pinches tried to bring up this water issue when he was on the board, he didn't even get a second from the board. They wouldn't even discuss it because he wanted to go on this kind of a tangent, and people didn't want to waste their time. We don't have time to waste. We've got issues we need to solve, and we need to, we just don't have time to waste on these kind of things that are non-starters.
Thank you, John, and your turn to respond. Pinches.
John, if I understand you correctly, what you're saying, when Sonoma County takes 87% of our water and sells it to Marin County, North Marin Water District, that we don't have time to look at that issue? When we're on water cutbacks and everything, Potter, or Redwood Valley, which gets all of their water out of Lake Mendocino, they had severe cutbacks, but Sonoma County was selling that water to the North Marin Water District. And now you're telling me we don't have time to worry about that issue? We need to move on? That is our basis for most of our water in inland Mendocino County, all the way from Potter Valley to where it goes, leaves Mendocino County at the south end. Probably benefits over half of the population of Mendocino County, and you're saying you don't have time to look into that issue?
I'm
John, your opportunity to respond.
I'm saying, when you brought it up to the board, even the people who represent the farming interest of Mendocino County and the rest of the board said they didn't want to waste any of our county resources because they knew it was a non-starter, that it was going nowhere. We need water, and we need to be careful with our water. We need to be environmentally sensitive with how we use our water, and we need to be doing water conservation in our farming in Mendocino County. We need to be looking at ponds. We need to be looking at catchments. We need to be looking at all those things that can save water and use the water most effectively. But we, I agree with what the other board members said. This is state law with the water rights, and why waste your time on something like that?
Can I rebut that?
Yeah, yes. Go ahead. One minute.
First of all, water rights can be changed. As far as spending a lot of money, all my motion proposed was that I was going to go down to, get the permission from my colleagues to go down to Sonoma County and talk to the Sonoma County Water Agency about the agreement, how they were getting 87% of the water out of Lake Mendocino to sell a big portion of it to the North Marin Water District. All I want to do is talk. I was going on my gasoline. It was no cost to the county. I couldn't get any support because frankly, a lot of the water interests in Mendocino County, they like it just the way things are. For instance, Potter Valley, they pay $4 an acre feet for their water. I think that could be adjusted, but we're getting nothing to taxpayers, and that is a huge benefit. You know, folks, I live on a ranch, and when you're out of water, you're out of everything. It's severely important. This could be the largest issue coming up in 100 years, maybe longer than that. And for my colleague, or my opponent here, to sit here and say that he don't have time to look into that issue is not acceptable to me.
Thank you, John, and you have an opportunity to respond as well. Hashtag.
Yeah, the price of water in Potter Valley is irrelevant to this question, but I wasn't on the board when they, he couldn't get any support for this plan, and nothing has changed on the board. And so he won't get any, if he were elected, he wouldn't get any support. So we need to move forward. We need to be forward-thinking, and we need to figure out how we can use the water that we have and look at conservation, look at what's best for environment, look at what's best for the water flows and the fish and everything else that we depend on in this, in the both basins, you know, the Eel River and the Russian River. And going back and trying to redo state water law is, it's not happening.
Thank you, candidates. We'll be moving on to the next question.
Can I rebut that again? No.
No. See, I told you, it's a game show atmosphere, John. The audience says no. Sorry. All right, John, hashtag, you'll be the first to respond to this question. It is regarding mental health. Puff unit was closed. Workers were cut. Management remains. How would you redevelop mental health? Would you use old Howard Hospital building for patient stabilization?
I, let me say, I don't think Howard Hospital is on the table right now as an issue. And so I was a person out there precinct-walking for Measure B because I thought that that was the right direction we needed to do. We needed to get that tax in place so that we could create this puff unit, and we could, it would economically benefit the county. I just went to the Measure B meeting the other day, and now they're talking about using that money that we're getting, which is over half a million dollars a month in tax revenue, and putting it towards crisis stabilization units, crisis intervention, residential treatment. And we're getting away from the intent of that money to create this puff unit. And so I think that we need to kind of look at the big picture again, maybe take it back with town hall meetings or something, and see what the people want to do with that. Because I think we've gotten away, we've almost done a bait and switch with people of this is what we're doing, now this is what we're doing.
Thank you, John. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, first of all, the voters passed for the funding to build facilities for mental health. We have two sources of revenue coming in for our mental health services, over $30 million that comes in to supply services all the way from the north county to the south county. And I don't want to see those services cut in order to build more buildings. I've heard different, the Kemper reports talking about different facilities on the coast and whatnot. Basically, they put the cart in front of the horse by getting the funding first and then finding out what they need now. So it's kind of a push-pull to where you put it. I know one thing, before I was on the board in 1993, they had just recently done away with the puff unit in Ukiah. The reason they'd done away with it was for two reasons. One, they didn't have hardly any patients, and number two is, they didn't have the staff, that the staff, like doctors and whatnot, to tend to take care of mentally, severely mentally ill patients. So they closed it because they just didn't have a lot of need, and then they sent the patients to out of county, which was a lot cheaper than a thing. I'm not sure things have really changed that.
Thank you, John. That's time there. You'll have another minute on this issue, John Pinches. John, hashtag, your opportunity.
So this Kemper report, which was commissioned by the county to look at the mental health services and the curriculum of service, or the range of services that we're providing and see where the gaps are, I think a couple of recommendations from them really need to be followed, which one was increase crisis intervention teams, which will go out to people in the third district and deal with them in their homes and try to keep them away from having to be hospitalized. I think that's a positive thing, intervention. And also the other is the family resource centers and boosting the amount of money that they get because they're doing really good work in the communities of our county, and they're keeping people, you know, on task of going to their appointments, making sure they're taking their medicine, doing those things that keep people out of the hospitals. So if we can do some of those preventative measures, I think that's a good step. I just don't know if that's what Measure B money is, should be used for.
Thank you, John. And John Pinches, your final opportunity.
It's real clear. Measure B money is supposed to be for the facilities. I don't disagree that we need more maybe crisis intervention people out there in the county. That's putting the services out there in the county. I'm all for that. But the Measure B was passed just to build facilities, and so now they're talking about, well, maybe we need a facility, a smaller facility here, one on the coast, one in Ukiah. They're talking about increasing the facility that Redwood Children's Services or Redwood Quality Management takes now, which is a large contractor for our mental health services in the center of Ukiah. So that's kind of all up in the air. One thing that I did get out of the Kemper report the other day, it's typical of consultants, the next thing they need is more money so to study it further. But it's, everybody seems to have an opinion of where you want these, but keep in mind, Measure B was money for facilities only, not for the operation of our mental services. And I don't want to see, I think we have a pretty good job of doing our, filling our mental health needs throughout the county. I'm not saying it's the best, but for the money we spend, over $30 million, and I don't want to see those services retracted just to put more pain on a fancier building. That's what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, John. All right, we're moving on to the next question. Two more questions here, folks, and then we'll have closing statements for both of the candidates. The next question is, I am concerned about the consolidation of power by the current CEO model of county administration. Is this a concern for you, and how would you address this if you are elected? John Pinches?
Well, I was, I've served under both models of the stage before, in the CEO model and the CAO model. Frankly, there's very little difference that I can see. What the problem is here is the supervisors are stepping back and letting the CEO run everything, and the board of supervisors should be the bosses. They're the five people that you people in Mendocino County elect. You spend a lot of effort in trying to pick the best candidates. They are the people that should be running the campaign and making decisions, not our CEO or not anybody underneath him or her. It's just that simple. The board needs to step up and be the boss on all these issues instead of deferring everything to the CEO's office. And that's, that's just how it works.
Thank you, John, and John, hashtag.
Yeah, I agree with that, that our system's set up that, you know, the supervisors are supposed to be there setting the policy, and the other people are supposed to be implementing that policy. When that doesn't happen, you know, things have to change. I think one of the key issues is where is that policy being set? And we're seeing time after time that the supervisors or the CEO are not listening to what the will of the people is. You know, we got the Griss Creek Asphalt Plant where all of a sudden, you know, the people weren't listened to. This was pushed through without the appropriate environmental reviews, and the county got sued, lost for $240,000. We got Measure V, which is a hack and squirt, which we talked about, not being implemented. We have the Cultural Services Agency, which the library advisory boards, everyone says it's a bad idea, and, you know, they pushed it through. And so who is, who's listening to whom?
Thank you, John. And John Pinches, would you like to expand?
Well, first of all, he referred to the Griss Creek Asphalt Plant. There is no Griss Creek Asphalt Plant. It's where they haul river run from the river, the overrun from the river, and process it there. There wasn't temporary asphalt plant there to pave our roads from Leightonville to Leggett down here to Willis. Without a temporary facility there, if they ever brought it back in, there is only one plant in the Ukiah Valley to service all of Mendocino County and further. And number one, if you only have one plant, you get no good competitive bid, so you end up paying up to maybe a third more for your, to pave your roads. And everybody loves our paved roads. You know, maybe we need more of them. Maybe we need them to be patched. But that's fact of life. Maybe doesn't, nobody likes oil mixed with gravel, but it's a fact of life. Pavement's a very popular thing in business parking lots and in our roads. And so, yes, that piece of property is zoned industrial. They were completely within their zoning requirements. They, maybe, I guess they put out, because the state required them to put rubber in part, as part of their asphalt, so when they done that, that made the air, better quality when they mixed it. I couldn't, can't blame that all on the operator. It was a requirement of the state that made it happen in the first place.
Thank you, John Pinches. Thank you for your response. And John, hashtag, you have an opportunity to respond here as well.
Well, I think it's a question of where we go in this county as far as how do we listen to people? How do we get citizen involvement? And I am looking forward to a new approach. I've spent the last year going out and meeting with people, all communities, all ethnic groups, all, everyone I could talk to. I've been out there talking to people, and I've had a great time doing it. And I think that that's the kind of participatory democracy that I'm going to do when I'm elected, because that's what the people in the third district deserve. They deserve a representative, a supervisor, who's going to be out there talking to them, getting out and seeing what the issues are, and reaching out to all communities. And I look forward to that.
Thank you. And moving on to our final question of the evening, I want to thank the audience for some great questions. I know our team had a difficult time eliminating, so I hope that we've captured most of what you hope to hear about this evening. Our final question is in regards to cannabis, and John, hashtag, you'll be the first responding to this question. What are your concerns about the county's handling of the cannabis regulation, if any? What changes would you propose in the ordinance or in the implementation of the ordinance? What is your vision for cannabis in the third district?
Big question. And I'll tell you what, it won't fit on a bar napkin. Okay? You know, we have cannabis in this county, and it's got a worldwide reputation. Appalachian is held in the very highest esteem throughout the world. So we need, that's a strength of our county, and we need to promote that. We need to, you know, get the canatourism going. We need to help people, the small heritage farmers, you know, survive. We don't want to go corporate on this. We don't want big grows coming into our county, but we do need to make those mom and pops survive. I've got a platform that you can get it at my table, or you can see it on my website, and it lays out exactly the 12 points that we're going to do to streamline and make it so people have a viable, dignified way of making a living.
Pinches.
First of all, last year, not this budget you were in, but last year, the county in Mendocino lost approximately $2.8 million in its cannabis program. This year, it's hard to tell how much money they, I just got a copy of this, this new budget, it was just printed last week. And it's hard to tell how much they are going to lose. They're admitting this year they're going to lose money. But it's hard to tell how much because they got so many of the positions hidden in other departments, like the ag department and building and planning, so it's really hard to extrapolate how much you can attribute to it. But the point of it is, they're still going to lose money on the whole program. That makes you bring to the point of, do we even need, if the county's going to lose money? I thought the whole idea for having a program was to make some money so people could fix the roads and other things with it. But if we're just going to continue to lose millions of dollars, why do we even need the program? You know, just say, okay, whatever, you know, if the feds come in or the state comes in, but why need, why do we need to spend our hard-earned taxpayers' money on cannabis program?
That's time, John.
In short, I would really streamline, if I'm going to vote for any process, it's going to be very streamlined.
And John, hashtag, an opportunity.
Yeah, I've heard this line from Mr. Pinches in the last few debates about, whatever, just let everyone do what they want to do because it's a legal entity. I don't think that's where we are as a county. I don't think that's what will be in our best interest as a county. We don't want corporations and all those doing massive grows in our communities. I'm not there. And I do think with the 12 points that I've talked to cannabis growers and seen what they want, and I think that we can work it to make it so it is viable. they want, and I think that we can work it to make it so it is viable for them, but also within the communities that we want. I think that we also need to look at public banking as an issue that will make our communities safer, where we get the large amounts of cash out of people's homes. I think we need to look at co-ops so that they can collaborate and making it economically viable. And the last thing, they need to have direct sales. And so with those three things, I think that we can make it work for people.
Thank you, John. And John Pinches, a final opportunity here.
Yeah, what I have said is, you know, cannabis is legal now, whether you like it or not. If you put 10 pear trees in your backyard, nobody's going to say much. If you put 10 grapevines in your backyard, nobody's going to say much. I think it should be the same for marijuana. Now, if you want to get huge, then you got to go through the use permit process, just like if you're going to put certain things, even in commercial or industrial zoning, you still got to go through either minor use permits or major use permits and they're conditionally. So it's not one size that sets all or fits all. So the community can come in and comment on what they think. So there's certainly ways to keep out quote-quote with these big corporations from coming in, which I don't think is reality. I think the heart of cannabis growing in Mendocino County in the future is going to be to make our small growers survive so they can put a, keep a roof over their head and feed their families. And that's what I will support.
Thank you, John.
Can we go another round on that?
Certainly. Let's do one more. One minute more each.
Oh. Well, there's also a big difference between our approaches is that we have these working groups in our county that are trying to make the ordinance work for the small grower. And these working groups have been working for a long time and they're working on different aspects of the ordinance. I've been endorsed by lots of people who are working on those working groups and I've been endorsed by the Covelo Cannabis Advocacy Group, Ron Edwards, Tom or Tim Blake up in Leightonville, who's the Emerald Cup person. You know, I've been endorsed by these people because they know that it's hard work, that complying with the state regulations and also making it work for Mendocino County is what's important, not just letting this laissez-faire deal go through. But they recognize that and that's why they're endorsing me.
Thank you. And a final response from John Pinches.
Well, and I said, and I actually do have a copy of my marijuana ordinance on the back of a bar napkin. It's real easy to do because all I said was keep the very minimal cost for the small growers. And if you want to get a medium size or large, then you got to go through the use permit process, just like you have to do to put any other type of business in Mendocino County. You know, let's put everybody on the same playing field. That's all I'm about, fairness, whether it's cannabis growing pears or grapes or whatever. I want, as far as rules about extraction of water, grading of land, whatnot, we already have those rules and laws on the books. I mean, there are state and federal and local laws, the grading ordinance and the state grading ordinance, the extraction of water from illegal sources, that's already dealt with. Why do we need to duplicate all that? But we've done, the last two years, we've probably spent over four or five million dollars between last year and this fiscal year in and getting nothing for it, getting nothing for it. Nobody's happy.
And that's time.
So back up, but there you go again. It's kind of like the horse has already left the barn. The ordinance is in place, it's going to take a lot to fully change it.
That's time, John. I'm going to cut you off there. We will have an opportunity for closing statements now. So we'll, here are two minutes from each of our two candidates and that will wrap up. I apologize for going a bit over here. Thank you, everyone, for being here and for your engagement this evening. For closing statements, John Hascheck, you'll start us off and John Pinches, you'll finish us up.
All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a great exercise in democracy. That's why I got into this, because I think that in this time and this day and age, we all need to be more civically engaged. So please vote on November 6th. There's three critical issues in our county, three areas of critical issues. The economy in transition, disaster preparedness, and the way we're governed, okay? As far as the economy in transition, you know, I appreciate what Larry said about the great Redwood Trail. You know, that's a great opportunity for us, you know, to make Willets a focal point for something. And this will bring in tourism and I totally appreciate the endorsement of Senator Mike McGuire and Assemblyman Jim Wood and our Congressman Jared Huffman, because they know that I'll be working with them on these issues and it's going to require state and federal collaboration. We also need career and technical education. We need broadband. We need those issues. And it's going to be able, we're going to need someone who can be a liaison and work with those entities. We need disaster preparedness. You know, that's why I'm so proud that I've been endorsed by everyone on the Brook Trails Board, because Sherwood Road, Brook Trails, it's critical that we get that done. And we also have other areas of the county where we can really work on fire preparedness. Jim Wood and I have talked about it repeatedly and I'm ready to work with the state in making it happen. And as far as the county governance goes, I'm not taking that raise because we need a new way of governing in this county. We cannot go back to the same old same old and take the big raises while the workers are not getting it. We can't do that, Mr. Pinches, and I ask for your vote for John Hascheck because we need to change the way things are going.
Thank you, John. And John Pinches, your closing remarks.
My opponent says he won't take the raise, but he had no problem taking $25,000 from the SEI Union, which represents about 800 county employees. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's not just being union strong, it's taken, at that point, that's a special interest. How can he negotiate for the taxpayers of Mendocino County and all fairness to all the other bargaining groups that are not SEIU members? Only about half of the county employees are SEIU members. So I bring that out because that's just a fact. My campaign has never taken more than $49 from any business individual corporation. We've spent a total of, I got it right here, about $5,800 on our campaign. We didn't have to buy signs because they're old signs. But anyways, I just, I'm going to say one thing. The first thing I want to do for Mendocino County, third district people, not just voters, but non-voters too, because I got to represent you the same way, kids 15 years old to 105, is to represent you. And I'll be a strong representative for the people of the third district down in Ukiah because that's where things happen that affect this area. We've seen what's happened with not very good representation for the last four years. Things really went sideways, whether it's our road in Leightonville, we don't even have an open road yard anymore. It's crazy, you know? And our roads are getting kind of bad and there's more money going in the road department than there ever was. And we're not getting nothing up here in the third district. Those are the things that I'm going to bring back to the third district. And infrastructure's big. The second access going up to Brook Trails, I'll work on that. It's going to be a tough one because it's very expensive and a very long process going through the sequel process and studying all routes. It's not a simple fix. We'll work on that, but there's a lot of issues and probably the main issues of the day will change in the two or three years. Things continually change. But on my worst day, I'll be your best supervisor.
Thank you, John Pinches. All right, folks, let's, first and foremost, let's hear a round of applause for yourselves for being here and committed to engagement tonight. This is, just like John said, this is what democracy looks like, so thank you for hanging in there. And a big thank you to all of our candidates tonight, John Pinches, John Hascheck. Thank you all of you for being here and being willing to be our public servants. And finally, a thank you to our sponsors, American Association of University Women, Willets Environmental Center, Mendocino Women's Political Coalition, and Willets Economic Localization. We couldn't be here tonight if it weren't for you, so thank you so much.